Let's get started. Good evening, everyone. Madam Clerk, clerk, please call the row.
Griffin, Bishop, Conwell, Gray, Hairston, Harsh, House Jones, Jones, Casey, Kelly, Moore, Polensic, Santana, Slyfe, Spencer, Starr, Welch. You have a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you. Everyone rise for a moment of silence, followed by the pleasures of allegiance.
The pleasure of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I now make the following statement. This meeting of Cleveland City Council is a lawful meeting under Section 605-04 of the codified ordinance. No person with purpose to prevent or disrupt a lawful meeting shall do any act which obstructs or interferes with the due conduct of such meeting. Members of public are invited to speak only under the rules set by this council. Disruption, including but not limited to speaking out of turn and making loud noises and loud utterances, are in violation of the rules and interfere with the due conduct of lawful meeting. Such disruption may constitute a misdemeanor and violation of Section 605.04. Anyone who disrupts this lawful meeting in violation of the codified ordinance commits misdemeanor and is subject to prosecution. The following is the first and only warning. If this meeting is disrupted, I will gavel a half to the proceedings and direct the assembled officers to escort any person participating in the disruption out of the chambers. Once persons participating in the disruptions are outside of our chambers, the officers will close the doors, and the disruptors will be handled as directed by the Director of Public Safety. The council proceedings will not begin again until those participated in the disruptions have left the chambers and the chamber doors are closed. Disruptors will not be allowed back in the chambers after the meeting resumes. Again, this is the first and only warning. Madam Clerk, dispense with the journal.
By Councilmember Kelly, that the reading of the minutes of the last meeting be dispensed with the journal approved, excuse me, seconded by Councilmember House Jones.
Thank you. We will now move to public comment. Councilmembers, if you could turn your chairs to face the speakers, and we're going to start with Sabrina Otis from Ward, Cleveland. Topic Unified Cleveland: Representing No One and Being Paid by No Organization. Ms. Otis?
Good morning. I mean, good evening, everybody. I first want to wish everyone who's running for office best wishes, because after next week, I will be pushing for new grassroots, that if you're reelected or a welcomed new elector, some standards of principle will be happening. Meaning, if you're a councilperson within your ward, there's an expectation that three things in the first 100 days that are completed substantial that benefit your residents and your residents only, not the city. Which brings me to the next point. Mayor Bibb, you recently made a statement on the news, and you talked about how we, the residents of Cleveland, don't like change. That's not true, or you wouldn't be in your chair. However, what we are seeing are deals that are being made in back rooms without forethought of the residents of Cleveland. Not the economy of the city, but the forethought of residents, especially CMSD students. Let me explain. The city of Cleveland has given the Browns, under what's called capital improvement, $28 million. Under renovation, $30 million. And the original construction debt is $32.9, which if you do the math, out of 100 mil leaves $9.1 million as a profit. I don't know how we squeeze in 25 mil for the lakefront. I don't know where that's coming from. But if you take in consideration that during the Browns regularly scheduled losing seasons, they generate $10, $11 million every year. So 9.1 isn't cutting it for us. To tell residents that's a good plan, and that the horrible hazelins, you didn't call them that, I do, were done negotiating, I'll call the flag on the play. There's a huge disparity, disparity, and what exactly did we, the community, the city of Cleveland residents, gain? We didn't gain anything. We lost again. Please stop saying we don't like change, because there's no real money coming to the city. All the money in that deal is debt. So we'll be paying off the debts. We're not gaining again. What citizens, especially parents of CMSD, would have loved, would have been something where they pay forward. And so what we would like for you to do is, the city of Cleveland has a pocket, and it's called the Water Department. We expect you to charge 30 mil a year, or more, to the Browns for water, if not more. Why? Because we need generated wealth in this city, since they're taking it to Brook Park. I don't care what they do in Brook Park, they can fall apart, they already fall apart on the field over here. But we, the citizens, want something out of this. We're not getting anything.
Time. Sorry.
Bye.
Thank you. Ms. Bickerstaff, Ward 9, and the topic today will be Councilman Conwell being shot, and Mayor Bibb over Brown's decision, representing no one, paid by no one. Ms. Bickerstaff.
Good evening, everyone. Mayor Bibb, how you doing? How you been? You know, my family, we voted for you. We voted for you to run this city. I don't agree on the way you handle the Brown situation. I think you should have had clergy, activists, voters, to protest and just flood that courtroom and let the huge NFL. You may run the NFL, but you don't run the city of Cleveland. That's the message that we should have put out there. We're losing money. Even though they lose, we still losing money. We're also gonna lose the Greyhound bus station. It's going out to Brook Park, so they can live lavish lives coming up in the future in their children. Don't like that. Didn't like that at all. However, sometimes we make mistakes, Mayor Bibb. But when in this time, I want you to run this city and stop listening to people that's in your ear. Because remember when we met on 147th and Kensington, before you even endorsed Issue 24? I told you, we wanted a new mayor with new ideas to take this city to the 21st century. We had that conversation, don't you remember? Yeah, you know, we had that conversation. So the second thing I want to talk about, Kevin Conwell, my councilman, walks all through the neighborhood all the time going for his waltz. He gets shot at. And you know what? Councilwoman House Jones, I ain't see no US Marshal or the FBI. I ain't seen no Sheriff Department. I haven't seen none of that. And you might think I'm wrong for going there, Jenny Spencer, but I think because he's a black man. I'm sorry to go there, but it's true. Because if that been a white councilman, it would have been choppers in the air. It would have been the National Guard. It would have been the Cleveland Police. It would have been the Sheriff Department, and the deputy would have been the FBI and the US Marshal. And guess what? ICE might have been joining the group too. Now, I got a problem with that, because guess what? If they shoot at him, they shoot at me. I'm just gonna keep it real. You can't walk in your neighborhood, and somebody's shooting at him? I think I know where it's coming from. Because maybe his wife disagreed with the Charlie Kirk situation. I don't agree, but you know what I'm saying? All of us need to be protected. But whoever shot at Kathy, I want you to know something. Just because they made your gun, they ain't stopped making guns. So if you shoot at somebody again, they might shoot back, and you might die. So be careful. Be careful. And I'm gonna be honest, I didn't like that. Even though Kevin and I disagree, I don't believe you should be shot at.
Thank you. Next up, we have Darryl Houston, from Bedford Heights. City issues, representing no one, paid by no one.
Hey, good evening, everybody. Today, I want to take this time out to hope don't nobody get offended, but I was told by my community, judges, pastors, leaders of the community, that I was not paying enough attention to the mayor, and I was paying too much attention to city council. But before I start, young lady, I want to say you look nice up there, Santana. I would like to see you sitting in that seat. I believe you earned that seat. Okay, that's the first thing.
We have the council.
Now, to the mayor, everything I'm gonna direct is straight to you, young man. I've believed in you. I've sat down and talked to you personally. I believe in some of your panel, but I don't believe, at this point, that me, as a taxpayer, as a black man in this community, as a father, I can't go another day watching you do what you doing down here, brother. You are systematically destroying this city, man. Okay? And I want you to understand where I'm coming from with that. I came home 18 years ago to this day, okay? I watched my granddaughter be born. She's 18 now, but only for her to be affected with lead. I done watched three administrations turn that state, that United States money to get rid of this lead out these schools and out these communities, and I done watched three mayors not do a dime of it. And as a result of that, I'm sitting here with a grandbaby that's affected by lead. So I'm gonna ask you directly, sir. Appoint me that position I don't want to pay. I want to ratify this lead out my schools and out my community, man. Because that's a generational curse right there, young man. I don't know if you have kids. I don't know if you care about kids. But I care about my community, and I care about my kids. And one more thing for this NFL game, let me tell you something about the United States of America and the NFL. We will never ever be able to match that type of income downtown, no matter what you want to put down there. That's guaranteed eight Sundays of revenue for those people that work down there, that own those buildings down there, that own those bars down there, that own these car lots and everything. You're not gonna be able to replace that income in 2029. You gonna swallow that whistle, young man. But I ain't gonna wait that long. You got 12 months to turn it around, brother. And I'm gonna show you what I mean, sir. Do, you know what that mean? Taxpayers wasted dollars? Campaign promises?
Time.
That'll get you pulled, Rodick.
Thank you. Next up, we have Noah Tumer, from Ward 15. Noah's from North Coast Yard, or his topic is North Coast Yard, and then he's from Cleveland Soccer Group, and not paid by anyone.
Good evening, councilmembers. Here to talk about the North Coast Yard and the future of the site that the Brown Stadium sits on. My name is Noah Tumer, and I'm here representing the Cleveland Pro Soccer Group, where I serve as the Executive Director of our foundation. This summer, we partnered with the North Coast Yard to bring something new to downtown Cleveland. A free, weekly adult pickup street soccer program, which culminated in two major street soccer tournaments right on the lakefront. What started as an experiment to see if we could create something that's never existed before, turned into something remarkable. Over the summer months, we engaged thousands of Cleveland residents and regional visitors through soccer as a part of the North Coast Yard summer programming. Our players came from all over the region, from CSU students to Clark Fulton neighborhood members to communities as far away as Mansfield, speaking dozens of languages and representing more than, more countries from all over the world. I played soccer with people from Somalia, the Congo, Ukraine, Spain, Brazil, and Cleveland, and dozens more. Every week, we had adults of every race, color, and creed playing side by side, people who'd never met before, sharing a field, building something that felt rare these days. A real sense of community and civic pride. We held men's and women's street soccer tournaments at the end of the summer, which brought in Northeast Ohio's best soccer brands, hundreds of fans, thousands of dollars, and a real sense of community. All of this was done on Monday nights. And this matters, because for these people, there is nowhere else in downtown Cleveland where they can play soccer safely and freely outdoors. No place in all of the city of Cleveland. This summer, the North Coast Yard became that place. A public third space that was healthy, joyful, and inclusive. That's why this conversation about the Brown settlement matters so much to me as a Cleveland resident. Because when you talk about the future of the lakefront, you're not just talking about buildings or new developments. You're talking about what our city can and should be. About making sure the lakefront is a part of the lives of the people who live here, as well as an attraction for people passing through. Since our summer season ended, I've been getting the same question from hundreds of players and fans all week, or every week. When does the soccer start again? When's the next kick-out tournament? And that's the energy we have because of the North Coast Yard. Hundreds of people ready to come back down to that lot downtown that sits unused most of the year, to play, connect, and keep the momentum alive. My hope is that as council and Mayor Bibb shape the path forward for this site and the Brown settlement funds, you'll ensure that recreation and community program like this stay right here on our lakefront, and that we continue to grow it together. Because when I do answer our community about what we're gonna do next summer, I don't want to be talking about moving these sports to a suburb as well. Thanks for your time and your continued commitment to keeping Cleveland's lakefront active.
Thank you. Next up, we have Mark Thomas, from Ward 16. Topic is Cleveland and Cuyahoga Prosecutor's Office and Public Safety, representing Coalition for a Better Cleveland, and not paid by anyone. Mark Thomas. Point once, twice? Okay, we'll move on. Next, we have Chairman Fahim, from Buckeye Woodhill. Topic boycott all-race fuel gas stations, representing New Era Cleveland, not paid by anyone.
I must admit, yesterday night seeing you up here, I do agree with the gentleman. No disrespect to Council President Blaine. Good evening, how's everybody doing today? We are so happy to be here. And I agree with the statements that you made announcing me up. We are advocating for a boycott of all-race fuel gas stations. Last week, I came down here and I talked to you all about informants and the use of police informants, and the way they're used to target specific organizations or community leaders. And so doubling down on that, I want to thank the people that came down here over the last year, the many people that have stood in front of this body and advocated on behalf of myself and our organization and our character. But throughout our trial, one thing I realized was the importance of community and bridging the gaps between multiple cultures and races and religions. And I think that the situation that we experienced provided the perfect storm to build coalitions, to build communities. And so I'm standing here to say that I'm proud that we were chosen to go through this process, to experience what some people would view as extreme trials, and we turned those triumphs into tribulations. So... Another thing I wanted to speak about, and there's so much to unpack. The day that the gas station owners were paraded down here in front of this body, I want to inform you all that when they left from out of this room, and my children were leaving as well, they made monkey noises at our kids as they left down the council stairs. They threw cigarette butts at our babies outside of this very building. There was an attempt from my attorney throughout this process to come down here and make public comment on my behalf, because the protection order prevented me from entering the same spaces these gas station people, who somehow managed to show up for three, four weeks consecutively, to prevent me from making public comment. With that being said, I also want to talk about human trafficking. Right? And not human trafficking in the sense of sex works, sex workers being trafficked through our communities, but undocumented immigrants being trafficked through these gas stations in our city. An important thing to highlight from this situation was that, the alleged night that this happened, there were three employees working at this gas station. There was no documentation, no work records, no information provided for none of these gas station workers. And somehow, these three people managed to disappear into thin air. They weren't even available for a police investigation. At no point, these gas station owners didn't even know these people's names, allegedly. No work records. And so I think that that's something that we should take seriously, and that's something that we should be investigating as a collective. Thank you, that's my time. See y'all next week.
Next up, we have Kelly Slobodian, from Ward 16. I hope I didn't mess up your last name, but topic is Cleveland and Cuyahoga Prosecutor's Office and Public Safety, the Love Project Movement, and not being paid. Kelly Slobodian? Point once? Twice? Okay.
I think the name must be wrong, because I'm the Love Project Movement, and that would have been on me, because we were just confused why my name wasn't selected after that.
Yeah, I just have a Kelly Slobodian, so this is how they signed up to it. Sorry about that. I don't have you on the list.
But you said the Love Project Movement, right?
Yeah, and they said representing the Love Project Movement, but it doesn't have your name on it.
But I'm the only person that could be representing the Love Project Movement?
So I don't know.
So there has to be a mistake with your office.
Okay, I'm not sure. I'm just reading off. So we're gonna move on to the next one.
Bib.
Fozzy Bedore, Ward 11. Topic 10022 Madison Avenue, not representing anyone and not being paid by anyone. Topic 10022 Madison Avenue, not representing anyone and not being paid by anyone.
Good evening, council. Madam President, you look good in that place. Mayor Bibb, I'm speaking to you tonight. I hope I can borrow your ears. Mayor Bibb, he was asked by the Chairwoman of the Board of Zoning, your Board of Zoning, if they knew that that location, 10022 Madison Avenue, was zoned, pedestrian overlay, and they could not put gas station. Samir Muhammad, the principal owner of that group, or one of them, the one that was appointed to the fairhouse and board by this council, said yes. Danny Kelly, Councilman Kelly was there. He said yes. I mean, you wonder, somebody paid $550,000, according to them, and $200,000 on top of them for something else to put gas station in a place they can't put gas station. But he answered that. He answered that, he says, "Councilmen or councilmen told me not to worry about, they'll take care of it." I mean, for God's sake, councilmen and councilwomen and councilmen, they represent the people. They don't represent special interests. That's one. Second, I mean, that location deserved from the councilmen to check with the community, with people in the community, to ask their opinion. Actually, with all respect to Councilman Danny Kelly personally, we have disagreement on this. He didn't ask, he didn't invite the people to a meeting. Actually, when we found out by accident, we asked for a meeting and we met forty people in that day. Forty people, thirty-nine said no to the gas station, one person said yes. But Councilman Danny Kelly went and appealed to the Board of Zoning. They lost in the Board of Zoning. They lost in the planning commission. And actually, Councilman Kelly blamed Jenny Spencer for intervening in Ward Eleven while he had Anthony Hairston co-sponsoring the legislation with him. Jenny Spencer represented eighty-five percent of the people around that location. Mayor Bibb acquired that location either by buying it outright or through eminent domain. Whatever you want us to do, we'll do. I know we're meeting with you next week, but let's do it. Let's do it. Let's do it. The people deserve it. The firemen at Fire Station Number Three deserve it. Your legacy is, deserve it. We have to do it. And I know Councilman Kelly threw some correspondence with him. He said he's for the fire station too, and that I appreciate it. But I'm telling history, I'm telling the truth of what happened before. That place cannot be gas station. Thank you.
Next up, we have Michelle Hicks from Garfield Heights. Topic subsection 667-99, City Codified Ordinance, representing no one, paid by no one. Go ahead. Ready?
Yep. Ready. There are many federal, state, and local laws that strictly prohibits unlawful discriminatory conduct. There are also federal, state, and local laws that strictly prohibits retaliation against those who complain about unlawful discriminatory conduct. Nonetheless, there are numerous instances of employees who face retaliation after making a complaint to their organization's Human Resources Department or the EEOC about unlawful discriminatory conduct. According to the National Workplace Bullying Coalition, harassment is a form of discrimination, and the targets are often women, black workers, Latinx workers, workers over forty, and workers with disabilities. Further, the targets are often high-performing, highly ethical employees whose competence poses a threat to their low-performing, low-ethical bosses. Unfortunately, if an employee can't establish that the behavior or conduct was motivated by discrimination, that employee is unlikely to be protected by the laws and the enforcement of laws against such treatment. Therefore, I am asking City Council to bring the Dignity at Work Act to the city of Cleveland. The Dignity at Work Act includes remedies for workers who are targets to be made whole, provides incentives for employers to prevent, detect, remedy, and eliminate all forms of workplace harassment and bullying, and more importantly, the act recognizes and protects the rights, the right to dignity and other human rights in the workplace, and prevents any abusive or negative behaviors that infringe upon those rights in the workplace. And I want to quote Matthew 25:40, "And the King will answer and say to them, 'Assuredly I say to you, inasmuch as you did it to one of the least of these, my brethren, you did it to me.'" That's in KJV if you want to know, but thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next up, we have Josiah Quarles from Shaker Heights. Topic homelessness, representing NEOC and not being paid by anyone.
Good afternoon, council, mayor, administration. First of all, I'd like to start off with a couple of thank yous because it's been good stuff happening. So thank you for the designation of the Tamir Rice Butterfly Garden. Thank you for the WCSB resolution. And generally, thank you not for not giving the Haslams any money at all. The outcome, I don't think, is what anybody necessarily wanted, and I think we could have been a little bit more creative and partnered with community to get a better result, but regardless, we don't need to be giving billionaires anything. Also, thank you for those of you who responded to the questionnaire that NEOC released to all of the twenty-five council candidates in this year's election regarding one of the most pressing issues in our community, which is housing. So thanks to the folks who took the time to fill that out. In addition to that, I did want to raise the fact that, as far as I know, there still hasn't been any resolution around the Rainbow Terrace investigation, which has really been dragging out, and I don't really understand what's going on with that. But in conjunction with that, I raised the point that all of that property was built on toxic sludge that was dragged up from the flats. And with an explosion like that, that debris is going to be dispersed amongst folks. So I'm calling on this body and all of the public health officials and hospitals in the area to make sure that all of the residents of Rainbow Terrace are tested for lead poisoning. I recently saw an article that, you know, our numbers are decreasing, but we're still like six times the national average, and a big part of that is our lack of testing to not even know what the issues are. I'd also raise that Millennium Group, which was the management company of Rainbow Terrace, has performed so poorly that their entire portfolio has been removed from HUD contracts at the end of this year. So I'd like to raise that and raise those red flags for if you see Millennium, it's a problem. I'd also like to state that the North Point closure is unacceptable. It's a huge loss in capacity to serve young people exiting foster care in the city of Cleveland, as well as folks and families who are displaced, and the youth have a space to go, those youth between eighteen and twenty-four, who were so concerned about their criminal activity and all of this thing, but we really don't care because we don't invest in the things that they need. And this was a city-owned building, right? The operations were run by the county, but the city owned the building.
Time.
So the fact that that is so dilapidated and resulted in this closure is just unacceptable.
Madam Clerk, we will move to communications.
File number 1384-2025 from Director Nichols, Department of Parks and Recreation. Notice of Grant Acceptance from Cuyahoga County Board of Developmental Disabilities, donor for Frederick Douglass Neighborhood Resource and Recreation Center in the amount of $10,000. From the Ohio Division of Liquor Control, file number 1375-2025 regarding a stock application at 1390 West Ninth Street, Ward Three. File number 1379-2025 regarding a transfer of ownership application in Ward Four. File number 1381-2025 regarding a new license application at 870 East 185th Street, Ward Eight. File number 1382-2025 regarding a new license application at 13228 Shaker Square, Ward Four. File number 1383-2025 regarding a new license application at 1400 West Sixth.
We're done? We're done? Okay, I'm sorry. Condolence resolutions?
Resolutions of condolence by Councilmember Conwell for Cynthia Haynes and by Councilmember Griffin for Sister Stephanie D. Cheney.
Any other condolences? Madam Clerk, could you hold a number for Geraldo Gomez?
So noted.
Okay. Councilmembers, please rise for a moment of silence. Thank you. Congratulatory resolutions?
Resolutions of congratulations by Councilmembers Conwell and Griffin for Zeta Omega Chapter of Omega Sci-Fi Achievement Week. By Councilmember Griffin for Anthony Ludwig. By Councilmember Griffin for Community Relations Board on their eightieth anniversary. By Councilmember Welch for Russell Hauser. By Councilmember House Jones for Constance Sealy Welch. By Councilmember House Jones for Shirley Sealy. By Councilmember Griffin for Rama Christian Academy on their, Reima, I'm sorry, Christian Academy on their one-hundredth anniversary. Resolutions of recognition by Councilmember Griffin for Lorna Wisham.
We're done. We don't have presentations today, right? Any?
None that I've been told.
Okay. So we'll move to first reading emergency ordinance referred by administrative review and committee review.
Ordinance 1354-2025 by Councilmembers Welch, Hairston, and Griffin by departmental request to amend Section One of Ordinance 71112 passed June 4, 2012 relating to designating the East Ohio Gas Company Building and Garage as a Cleveland landmark. Ordinance 1357-2025 by Councilmembers Conwell, Hairston, and Griffin by departmental request to amend Section One of Ordinance 186184 relating to designating the St. Aloysius Church as a Cleveland landmark. Ordinance 1362-2025 by Councilmembers Starr, Hairston, and Griffin by departmental request authorizing Director of Economic Development to enter into a forgivable loan agreement with Penrose Holdings or its designee to provide economic development assistance to partially finance the construction, pre-development, and renovation costs associated with converting two buildings located in Ward Five service area into affordable apartments for seniors and families and other associated costs necessary to redevelop the properties. Ordinance 1367-2025 by Councilmembers Polensik and Griffin by departmental request authorizing the Director of Public Safety to enter into contract with Flock Group, DBA Flock Safety, for professional services necessary to install, design, implement, and test an integrated technology safety solution, including necessary hardware for the maintenance and technical support for a period up to three years with two one-year options to renew exercisable by the Director of Public Safety. Ordinance 1368-2025 by Councilmembers Casey and Griffin by departmental request authorizing the Director of Public Utilities to enter into one or more requirement contracts without competitive bidding with the Safety Company LLC, DBA M-Tac Company, to provide proprietary parts and services to maintain queues, pipelines, inspection trucks, and equipment, including labor for the Division of Water Pollution Control, Department of Public Utilities, for a period of two years. Ordinance 1369-2025 by Councilmembers Hairston and Griffin by departmental request authorizing the Director of Economic Development to enter into a tax increment financing agreement with Penrose Holdings or its designee to assist with the financing of Warner and Swayze, of Warner Swayze I and Warner Swayze II projects to be located at 5701 Carnegie to provide for payments to Cleveland Metropolitan School District and to declare certain improvements to real property, excuse me, to be a public purpose. Ordinance 1380-2025 by Councilmembers Griffin and Polensik to amend Section 621.07 of the codified ordinances relating to menacing of a healthcare worker.
First reading emergency ordinance to be passed.
Ordinance 1370-2025 by Councilmembers Conwell and Griffin by departmental request to amend Section Seven of Ordinance 589-2024 to change the name of Gobion Inc. to Gobion LLC. Ordinance 1371-2025 by Councilmember Griffin authorizing the Director of Department of Community Development to enter into an agreement with Fairfax Renaissance Development Corporation for Fairfax Neighborhood Technology Training Center Program, providing activities free to the public, increasing the opportunity to learn how to use computer technology and to develop digital skills through the use of Ward Six Casino Revenue Funds. Ordinance 1372-2025 by Councilmembers Bishop and Gray authorizing the Director of Department of Community Development to enter into agreement with New Point Community Development Corporation for the public purpose of health, wellness, and general welfare by providing food cards to eligible city of Cleveland residents through the use of Wards Two and Four Neighborhood Equity Funds. Ordinance 1373-2025 by Councilmember Griffin authorizing the Director of Department of Community Development to enter into agreement with Fairfax Renaissance Development Corporation for the public purpose of health, wellness, and general welfare by providing food cards to eligible city of Cleveland residents through the use of Ward Six Casino Revenue Funds. Ordinance 1374-2025 by Councilmember Griffin by departmental request approving the collective bargaining agreement with Cleveland Building and Construction Trades Council and to amend Section 48 of Ordinance 194-2021 as amended relating to salaries for various classifications.
Read the motion to suspend the rules.
By Councilmember Kelly, that the rules be suspended and the legislation just read be placed on final passage, seconded by Councilmember House Jones.
Call the rule.
Griffin, Bishop, Conwell, Gray, Hairston, Harsh, House Jones, Jones, Casey, Kelly, Moore, Polensik, Santana, Slyfe, Spencer, Starr, Welch.
Call the rule on passage.
Fourteen yeas.
Call the rule on passage.
Griffin, Bishop, Conwell, Gray, Hairston, Harsh, House Jones, Jones, Casey, Kelly, Moore, Polensik, Santana, Slyfe, Spencer, Starr, Welch. Fourteen yeas.
First reading emergency resolution referred by administrative review and committee review.
Resolution 1385-2025 by Councilmembers Polensik, Santana, Slyfe, and Griffin urging the Civil Service Commission to enact rules and procedures to ensure Cleveland resident applicants who are passed over are put back on the eligibility list.
Good. First reading emergency resolutions to be adopted.
Resolution 1376-2025 by Councilmember Santana withdrawing objection to the transfer of ownership of a C2-C2X liquor permit at 3738 Newark Avenue and repealing Resolution 494-2025 objecting to said permit. Resolution 1377-2025 by Councilmembers Starr and House, House Jones condemning the 2025 United States government shutdown and urging prompt bipartisan action to reestablish funding and protect essential services.
Read the motion to suspend the rules.
By Councilmember Kelly, that the rules be suspended and the legislation just read be placed on final passage, seconded by Councilmember House Jones.
Call the rule.
Griffin, Bishop, Conwell, Gray, Hairston, Harsh, House Jones, Jones, Casey, Kelly, Moore, Polensik, Santana, Slyfe, Spencer, Starr, Welch.
Call the rule on adoption?
Excuse me. Fourteen yeas.
Okay, sorry. Fourteen. Call the rule on adoption.
Griffin, Bishop, Conwell, Gray, Hairston, Harsh, House Jones, Jones, Casey, Kelly, Moore, Polensik, Santana, Slyfe, Spencer, Starr, Welch. Moore, Polensik, Santana, Slyfe, Spencer, Starr, Welch. 14 yeas.
Second reading emergency ordinance to be passed.
Ordinance 1068-2025 by Councilmembers Bishop, Moore, and Griffin by departmental request authorizing the Director of Parks and Recreation to accept a donation from Changeover or its designee to allow and accept improvements to two tennis courts located at Harmony Park as a gift to the city. Ordinance 1072-2025 as amended, excuse me, by Councilmembers Bishop and Griffin by departmental request to amend the Fourth Whereas Clause in Sections 1, 3, and 4 of Ordinance 549-2025 relating to an amendment to a contract with Osborn Engineering Company to provide additional services relating to the North Coast Connector Project, aka the Lakefront Pedestrian Bridge Connector. Ordinance 1210-2025 by Councilmember Griffin by departmental request amending Section 6 of Ordinance 2916 passed January 25, 2016 entitled "An Emergency Ordinance Authorizing the Issuance and Sale of Water Pollution Control Revenue Bonds of the City for the Purpose of Paying Costs of Improvements to Water Pollution Control System," authorizing the Master Trust Agreement with Secure Water Pollution Control Revenue Bonds of the City, authorizing and approving related matters and declaring as an emergency author, to provide for the issuance of subordinated indebtedness for the purpose of refunding any outstanding bonds or any outstanding subordinated indebtedness, authorizing a third supplemental trust agreement and other agreements, documents, and actions related to amendments of the WPC General Bond Ordinance and authorizing and approving related matters. Ordinance 1211-2025 by Councilmember Griffin by departmental request authorizing the city to apply for and accept and enter into a cooperative agreement with the city and the Ohio Water Development Authority for the refinancing of the city's Water Pollution Control Revenue Bonds Series 2016 and the proceeds of which were used for the purpose of paying costs of improvements to the Water Pollution Control System and authorizing and approving related matters. Ordinance 1219-2025 by Councilmembers Casey and Griffin by departmental request determining the method of making a public improvement of constructing and installing replacement sewers and repairing and rehabilitating existing sewers and sewer connections, relining sewers, and constructing and repairing catch basins and manholes at various locations throughout the city on an as-needed basis and authorizing the Director of Public Utilities to enter into one or more public improvement requirement contracts for the making of the improvement and authorizing gifts, grants, or loans for the term of one or two years. Ordinance 1220-2025 by Councilmembers Casey, Polensik, and Griffin by departmental request determining the method of making the public improvement of constructing the East 185th Street, East 68th, East 113th Street, East 151st Street, Shore Acres Drive, Chatfield Avenue, Chatfield Avenue, Melgrave Avenue, and Grimsby Avenue, Sobieski Avenue area sewer replacement or rehabilitation projects, authorizing the Director of Public Utilities to enter into one or more public improvement contracts, authorizing the Director to employ one or more professional consultants necessary to design the improvement, and authorizing the Director to apply for and accept any loans or grants from any public or private entity. Ordinance 1221-2025 by Councilmembers Bishop and Griffin by departmental request authorizing the Director of Parks and Recreation and/or Director of Public Works and/or the Director of Finance to contract with one or more temporary employment agencies to provide professional services to supply temporary and seasonal personnel for the Department of Parks and Recreation and/or Department of Public Works and the Project Clean Program and for various other departments of the city for a period up to one year. Ordinance 1222-2025 by Councilmembers Bishop and Griffin by departmental request authorizing the Director of Public Works to contract with one or more consultants or firms of consultants to provide professional services necessary to maintain, I'm sorry, to manage the nuisance abatement process that oversees the cutting and cleaning of vacant and occupied structures that are in violation of building and housing and/or health code ordinances for a period up to two years. Ordinance 1299-2025 by Councilmembers Bishop and Griffin by departmental request determining the method of making the public improvement of repairing, constructing, and installing various ADA compliant structures, including but not limited to curb ramps and authorizing the Director of Public Works to enter into one or more public improvement requirement contracts for the making of the improvement. Ordinance 1307-2025 by Councilmembers Spencer, Griffin, Santana, Bishop, Conwell, Hairston, Casey, Polensik, and Slyfe, changing the name of Herman Park located at Herman Avenue and West 59th Street to Judge Raymond L. Pianca Park upon completion of Herman Park renovations and site improvements. Ordinance 1315-2025 as amended by Councilmember Griffin by departmental request authorizing the Director of Finance to enter into, into an amendment to a contract with the Childcare Resource Center of Cuyahoga County for additional funds for 18 eligible households to continue to provide funding for early childhood education from Department of Finance.
Okay. Read the motion to suspend the rules.
By Councilmember Kelly, that the rules be suspended and the legislation just read be placed on final passage, seconded by Councilmember House Jones.
Call the rule.
Griffin, Bishop, Conwell, Gray, Hairston, Harsh, House Jones, Jones, Casey, Kelly, Moore, Polensik, Santana, Slyfe, Spencer, Starr, Welch. 14 yeas.
Call the rule on passage.
So noted.
Okay. Oh, okay. Councilman Slyfe?
Thank you for TV 20. Councilwoman Moore has to be added to the piece on Judge Pianca Park, correct?
Yes.
Yes. Could you mark me as a no on 1072? Thank you.
So noted.
Okay. So do you have to call the rule on passage again?
Griffin, Bishop, Conwell, Gray, Hairston, Harsh, House Jones, Jones, Casey, Kelly, Moore, Polensik, Santana, Slyfe, Spencer, Starr, Welch. On 1072-2025, 13 yeas, 1 nay. On all others, 14 yeas.
Second reading emergency resolutions to be adopted.
Resolution 1097-2025 by Councilmembers Spencer, Bishop, and Griffin by departmental request requesting the Director of Transportation of the State of Ohio determine and declare a reasonable and safe prima facie speed limit of 30 miles per hour for Lake Avenue between West 117th Street and Detroit Avenue.
Read the motion to suspend the rules.
By Councilmember Kelly, that the rules be suspended and the legislation just read be placed on final passage, seconded by Councilmember House Jones.
Call the rule.
Griffin, Bishop, Conwell, Gray, Hairston, Harsh, House Jones, Jones, Casey, Kelly, Moore, Polensik, Santana, Slyfe, Spencer, Starr, Welch. 15 yeas.
Call the rule on adoption.
Griffin, Bishop, Conwell, Gray, Hairston, Harsh, House Jones, Jones, Casey, Kelly, Moore, Polensik, Santana, Slyfe, Spencer, Starr, Welch. 15 yeas.
Yes, we got through that. Introductions? Any introductions today? Councilwoman Spencer?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do have two introductions this evening. I would like to introduce Mohan Joshi. Can you please stand up? Who is a government officer with the government of Nepal and will be with Chief Ethics Officer Delonte Spencer Thomas for the next three weeks, as well as Regina Batrai. Please stand up, who is with the Nepal Law Society. Both of these outstanding individuals are State Department, part of the State Department's Professional Fellows Program for Governance in Society. There are eight total fellows from India, Pakistan, Nepal, and Sri Lanka who are rising leaders in the public sector, NGOs, and civil society who are placed in fellowships across Cleveland. And I'm so honored that Ms. Batrai will be a fellow in my office for the next three weeks. So hearty welcome, welcome to Cleveland.
Welcome. Councilman Starr?
Yes, Ward 5's own Tim Lewis is in the house, do a lot of activists working in the neighborhoods. Want to make sure I do an introduction to Tim Lewis.
Thank you. Any other introductions? No? Okay. Any announcements? You guys being good today. Any miscellaneous? Councilwoman House Jones?
Very quickly, so I know everybody is aware of the changes in the stop of SNAP recipients, SNAP distribution coming up this Saturday. And so just a reminder, the four Clevelanders that are needing food assistance, please contact 211, just really trying to coordinate things so that people can know. As I know, in addition to SNAP recipients, we also have federal workers, as I literally had a federal worker reach out to me today to talk about actually the need for food assistance. So please reach out to 211 and if there are any businesses who are the beneficiary of many of the federal tax cuts to contribute to the Cleveland Food Bank so that we can expand our capacity as there is an ever-growing demand for food assistance during this season. And if you are a charitable person, please connect to help, to help our neighbors. So that's what I wanted to share. Thank you. And also thank you all to our councilmembers who have signed on to the letter that we will be sending, that we have sent to the governor, our state senators, as well as general assembly members of the need for the federal government, as well as our state partners to step up. And the emergency clauses that are available through the Ohio USDA, U.S. Department of Agriculture, as well as through the controlling board in the state of Ohio, this is a need that is necessary, and we hope our partners on the federal and state grammar, state level will do their part. Thank you.
Thank you for leading. Councilman Starr?
Just something that's deep in my heart right now is some of the things that Councilwoman Stephanie House Jones just mentioned. I definitely want to make sure I just say this for the record, you know, elections have consequences. And that's something we have to be real with our people. When you talk about the 2024 presidential election, I remember the memes, I remember the false jokes, I remember everything that was shared on social media, and only 150 million people around the country voted. 90 million people didn't vote. They had reasons of, I didn't like the candidates, I didn't feel like getting involved, and now we left today, almost close to a year later, with a government shutdown. So I commend myself, my colleague, Councilwoman Stephanie House Jones for coming together and introducing the end passage of this Resolution Number 1377 condemning the 2025 United States government shutdown and urging prompt bipartisan action to reestablish funding and protect essential services. Most people hear the word SNAP, but they don't understand what that SNAP does. When you talking about supplemental, when you talk about different opportunities for supplemental nutrition assistance program, you talking about a ways to feed people. And what I mean by that is, this government shutdown is about to get real. It's about to get real for a lot of individuals. And what I mean by that is, we talking about families where they got one person to head it out. So typically right now is a, is a female. Got to feed five, six different individuals, and they're not about to get their food stamps. That EBT card is not about to get reloaded. I don't know that many individuals who save money on their EBT card. So guess what? This government shutdown is about to impact a lot of residents. And I definitely want to make sure I address this because the population currently in Ward 5 is a little bit over, close to 21,000 residents. The median income in Ward 5 is $15,000. Eight in 10 Ward 5 residents, 15,751 total live at below 200 of the, 200% of the federal poverty level, which means they are eligible to receive food bank benefits. 80% of our children in Ward 5, which is a total of 5,355 children, live below the poverty rate. So when you talking about overall, bigger picture, 165,011 congressional district residents, including seniors, working parents, and children, will be left without the critical nutrition assistance they rely on because of this government shutdown. It's going to get real for us in Cleveland, it's going to get real in our congressional district, and we need to be able to think of ways to help. So I definitely just want to shed this light on, just, just from some policy understanding, to our law director, Mark Griffin, and our director, Angela Shute-Woodson. I remember earlier this year, we were discussing transferring different funds and discretionary accounts from councilmember to a department. This is the reason why I say I wanted to transfer some money to be able to help in CRB. What I mean by that is, it takes so much, it takes so long to get a dollar out the door through this legislative process. When we receive funds from the general fund into a certain account, and now you talking about all these residents in Ward 5 that's going to be looking for me to figure out ways to help them. The county just announced that they ain't got no money. The county just announced they ain't got no money. And I look at my discretionary funds, I have a few dollars. It would be good to be able to hit Director Angela Shute-Woodson, who's in charge of community relations, and say, hey, November 1, residents in Ward 5 are not going to be eaten. But we do have 100,000. I do have 150,000 that we transfer to be able to help them. So that's why policy matters. It's, it's not about just spending it or doing whatever you want. We should be able to hit up someone, hit up a department on collaboration to help them, to help our residents. And that's why I think we need to figure out how to make it easier to get the dollars out the door, making sure we have the right safeguard rails up. But right now, this about to get real bad. You talking to a person who was raised by a single mother with six kids. And I don't know what my mom would do right now, understanding that she ain't got no way to feed them. The food banks are saying they don't have no money, they don't got no food. This is about to hit Cleveland. They already deemed us one of the poorest major cities in this, in this country. November 1, them stamps are not going to be there. Thanksgiving, they're not going to be there. This is why we give out gift cards. This is why we advocate to have additional discretionary funds, because we're going to have to do something. So I do want to be able to talk to you, Director Griffin, for always having an open air, and also with Director Angela Shute-Woodson, and also Mayor Bibb, like, hey, how can we figure out how to get some things out? Because I want to make sure residents in Cleveland, especially our Ward 5 residents, if I got a few dollars in this, in one of these discretionary accounts, how can we get out the door, just so our people won't go hungry? Because we don't know when this shutdown going to end, and we don't want to see these children out here doing lord knows what, just to find some food. So I appreciate y'all.
Councilman Polensik? Oh, okay. Councilman Conwell?
I agree with Councilmember Starr 100%. We're getting ready to go into our fund transfers, and I know you guys are working on that already. We might have to set up a, a fund for, for food, put it aside. And then when some of our, our departments have not spent their money, and Mr. Mayor and council, we might have to transfer some funds over there so that we can get it out the door. You right, you got to get it out the door, Councilmember Starr. Just can't sit there when we transfer the funds. And I don't, I love Ward 9, but we have to look at the entire city, how we can benefit and help out our residents. And it's very, very important. And at the same time, Mr. Mayor Mark, maybe we could look at doing a, a food drive ourselves in the city of Cleveland with City Hall leading the charge. Two things that we can do, the food drive, as well as transfer some funds and set that fund up. fund up. Your financial director would know how to do that, and then we can move forward, maybe with a couple of hundred thousand dollars in that direction. Thank you very much.
Councilman Polensic.
Thank you, Madam Chair and person. Just to follow up on my honorable colleagues, you know, I've been talking to the food bank, and so just ties into what's been said. I'd like to provide some funding to the food bank, which is located in my community. It's a wonderful, wonderful place. But again, we're told that they have to spend the money upfront before they would be reimbursed. So again, as Councilman Starr, Councilman Conwell, other my colleagues, Stephanie House Jones, I mean, we are confronted with a massive problem coming very shortly. But something else that has not been mentioned, not only are families going to be hit, but look at all the stores that are contingent upon those funds, about people shopping at those neighborhood stores. Those dollars are disappearing. So you're going to see a hemorrhage, you're going to hear a domino on a lot of stores within the city of Cleveland who are not going to have that revenue available to them. That revenue is going to disappear. So there is the domino coming. So I would like to think again, and my colleagues have touched on, I got to believe there's a way that those of us who want to put money into the food bank could do that without having them to have to spend it or come up with some dollars to cover it, to spend upfront. I don't get it. They are a nonprofit group. So again, there's some very brainy people within the law department, within community development. I got to believe that there's some way we can overcome that hurdle, where we can, those of us here within this body who would like the direct funds over to the food bank to provide the additional support, because it's just not, this is a crisis that's coming, and I don't see any movement, unfortunately. I wish I could say I saw movement on both sides of the aisle in Washington, but I don't. But I'm just posing it right now. There's got to be a way we can overcome it. So if I want, if Councilman Starr, Councilman Conwell, myself, other members wanted to put money into the food bank, where we could do it, so they could go out and get, they could purchase additional food, where they could support these families that are going to be lined up, because just as Councilwoman House, but I've gotten calls already from federal employees that are looking at where can they get help? I mean, what we are dealing with today is outrageous. Just think about it, in 2025 in America, that we have families, federal employees, that were just coming to work every day, now denied the opportunity, not only to work, but to be paid in many cases, and now worrying about being affected, then coupled with our own, our own poor families in our neighborhoods, as my colleagues have indicated, moms raising four, five, six kids and not having the ability to feed them. So again, I'm just going to say, I would urge you, there's got to be something we can do to overcome that. So I'm just posing, I know, Mayor, you feel very passionately about this as well. We got to fix it. And I like to believe we could fix it with all the brain trust we have here, and in the law department, there's got to be in community development, there's got to be a way we can direct funds into the food bank. I'm prepared to do it tomorrow. I'm prepared to direct money to the food bank tomorrow, but I can't do it. Only you can allow it to happen. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Councilwoman Spencer.
Well, yeah. Well, let's put together a project team. I mean, let's do it. We talking on the floor. So we get together with the mayor, Councilmember Starr, we meet, so we can do contingency planning, and we put together a project team, and we meet with community development, and we move forward with it. And so we'll talk with you afterwards, this meeting here, and see who can we talk with over there. That's where I'm at. We'll talk with you, Mark Griffin. Thank you, and God bless.
Councilwoman Spencer.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a few miscellaneous items tonight. Thank you so much to all of our colleagues who are speaking so eloquently about the urgency of SNAP benefits and what our fellow residents are facing in Cleveland. Thank you all so much for your leadership. I'd like to thank all of my colleagues for supporting ordinance 1307-2025 and for joining me as cosponsors. This will rename Herman Park as Judge Raymond L. Pianca Park upon completion of park improvements. So thank you all so much for supporting that piece. I'd also like to thank you for supporting resolution number 1097-2025, which has been years in the making, and this will lower the speed limit on Lake Avenue from 35 miles per hour to 30 miles per hour. It's been years in the making. I would also like, Madam Chair, to take a moment to address my colleague, Councilman Richard Starr. And Councilman Starr, again, you spoke so eloquently this evening about the concern about hunger and SNAP benefits, and I so appreciate your leadership. And as I have said to you in the past, I respect and value you as a colleague. However, I rise tonight because when you rose last Monday to speak on this floor, I became uncomfortable with your comments. And first, I was uncomfortable, and then I became concerned. And while only the presiding officer of this body yields the gavel, only our council president, the presiding officer, you know, the comments, your comments led me to enough concern that I went and reviewed our council rules. So I'd like to take a moment to invite all of us as members of this body to review our council rules, and I'd like to highlight Rule Number 6, professionalism. All members shall conduct themselves professionally and with civility. And Rule 22, right of floor, which states that members shall not be impolite, discourteous, or disrespectful toward any member of the body. That is how I experienced your comments as your colleague. So I would like to invite all of us as colleagues to please maintain our professionalism as members of this body. Thank you.
Councilman Hairston.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Doing a great job up there tonight, looking wonderful. Just want to add on to my colleagues, the rubber has truly met the road as relates to the shutdown in the November 1st date approaching, and so many families are at risk of not, you know, having access to their SNAP benefits. You know, I was talking to Famicos, our CDC, about, listen, what can we do? Can I give some extra dollars to you all? Famicos have time and time again have stepped up to support our community in so many different ways, and fully supportive of sending more money to the food bank, you know, for them to do their work that they do every single day on behalf of those who need it the most. 100% on board with that. But we also have other organizations who can provide support to our neighborhoods as well. Famicos is one of them. And so as we work through the process of trying to make it easier to get money out the door by supporting the food bank, let's also look at other organizations like Famicos who's established as well. We run the Five Point Community Center on 152nd Street. They operate it, they lead it on a day-to-day basis. I provide the 100% funding to operate that facility there. We provide a senior meal program, right, that's there every four days a week, hot meals, breakfast, and lunch. There's a pantry that happens there, there's produce distribution that happens there several times during the month, and that is a place that we know where folks are going to come. In fact, I got calls from the office today that folks were already showing up and just asking questions whether the pantry in the center will be open, you know, more days than what it currently is, because they are concerned. Had a woman who saw me on the street, she was walking with her kids, she picked them up from daycare, it was a weekend daycare, and she stopped and talked to me about, you know, her concerns. Listen, SNAP is what keep us, to keep my family together, right? She said Thanksgiving is coming up, we don't know if we're going to have Thanksgiving dinner, right? And just the concern is real, and I just hope that this building, 601 Lakeside, understands, you know, the concerns that folks are having, right? It's the federal workers, yes, but it's also those who receive these additional benefits that supports their households. They absolutely need it. And so if this body and this administration can find a way to relax some of our restrictions or some of our rules, that we don't have to require an organization to put out the money in order to get it back, that we can really fund upfront organizations that can really help the people who need it the most, you know, in our community. And so fully supportive of my council team here in administration. We have a great mayor, we have a great administration here who gets it, and I look forward, I was all working together to figure out a solution to support those who are going to be deeply affected by the shutdown and the lack of SNAP benefits. Thank you.
Councilman Joe Jones.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I stand to support my colleague Anthony Hairston on terms of flexibility of how we use our resources and making sure that we can get those resources out on the streets pretty quickly when it comes to times of needs. But let us not be mistaken in what's happening here, because I think a lot of our citizens are asleep. What's fundamentally happening in front of them is like the calm before the storm. You don't put federal troops into cities unless there's a declaration of war. And so we need to fundamentally understand, when they start talking about Cleveland is on the list, we need to fundamentally get prepared for that. We've seen the cuts that have come from the State House to our food banks, and in a time when our citizens need it most. So I just look at what we're experiencing here as Americans as something very serious. And as Democrats, if we want our voters to vote, then we need to produce. We have educational systems right now that continue to be at the bottom level of education that we shouldn't be seeing in the city of Cleveland right now. In fact, it's gotten worse, so it hasn't gotten any better since the time I was in high school. We have a city that has the dubious distinction of being the most segregated city in the United States of America in addition to having a poverty-stricken system in play. And so when we talk about what's right, I like Richard Starr and when he stands up, because he's one of the few councilmembers on this body who will stand up on issues and speak truth to power. And some people might feel uncomfortable with what you got to say, young man, but you keep on doing what you got to do. This is about, this is about freedom of speech, and if they can try to restrict your ability and capacity to speak, then something's wrong with them. And that's the reason why voters get discouraged, because when people do stand up like you and fight for them, then they some find a way out to take you out the box. So keep doing what you're doing, keep standing for what you're standing. And two seats over was the seat of Fannie Lewis. And Fannie Lewis didn't play around. She stood her ground, she fought for what she wanted to. And we can recall a time when even the mayor would throw a chair at somebody in this council and picked you up and threw you out the door. So let's put things in perspective, right? Some people will always be sensitive about what you got to say, but what they got to understand, you have a right as a human being on God's planet, not their planet, not their rules, but God's rules and His planet. And He gave you the mouth to speak. Keep on speaking the truth, do what is right, and it will never let you down. Thank you.
I do want to thank the mayor and the Health Department, Dr. Margolis, Director Alyssa Hernandez, and everyone who was out at Ward 14 this Saturday for the National Lead Prevention Awareness Week. I was getting calls of like, what is going on on the streets? You know, it was about 100 people that attended, and really, Ward 14 is a spot, in a hotspot in our area. I know oftentimes, some of my colleagues think that lead does not happen in the west side, right? And I will tell you that there's huge hotspots in the Clark-Fulton, Stockyard neighborhoods, but I do want to thank you for that. It's something that normally doesn't happen in our area where they do lead walk, prevention walks, so thank you for that. I appreciate it.
So Madam Clerk, please excuse the absences.
By Councilmember Kelly, that the absence of Councilmember Griffin is hereby excused, seconded by Councilmember House Jones.
Councils adjourn to the call of the chair. The next meeting will be November 10.